Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Stand for the pledges of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam clerk, please call me.
Justice Brewer.
Here.
Justice Grant.
Here.
Justice Brown.
Here.
Justice Tatum.
Here.
Justice B. Clark.
Here.
Justice
Okay, I'm gonna go to item number four. I will ask for a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of November 28, 2000. October the 3rd, 2017. I'll entertain the motion. Motion is lost for lack of seconds.
Mr. Mayor, only I say that that's the second time those minutes have been presented. Uh, we can prevent you one more time and then after that, then you just go in and bow.
Okay, I ask that the trustees, um, find time to converse with the clerk, um, to find out what it is that you, um, not agreeance with for the minutes so we can, uh, move forward with that. Find out her schedule, um, sometime and find out so we can talk and go over with it. Next, item, public comment, item number five. All questions and comments must be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter pertaining to the business of Saw Village. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes and may not engage in debate, counter replies, or above. State your name.
Judy Gannister. Last week I got up and I, I was asking for making statements from a lot of paperwork that I, uh, and, um, I have more questions on the same topic. We talked about Ms. Strouder and, um, what she's being paid, et cetera. According to your accounts payable, there are three days that she worked, just three days, for a total of $3,360. One of the days was for $935. And it put up a red flag for me because it was April 1st, which happened to be Easter Sunday. Now, I don't know where anybody else works. But nobody got paid $935 on an Easter Sunday, even if they were working a double at the hospital. And to pay $336 for three days rounds out to approximately $140 an hour. And if everything that she did over those three days has to go to an attorney and be checked out and approved and all that stuff, there's an additional $170 an hour that is, is going to be paid out to approve what she's already gotten paid for. I said it last week and I'm going to say it now. We can't afford this lady. I don't care what kind of background she's got. I don't care how great she is. We can't afford to pay her and her lawyer. When you get 140 plus 170, we can't handle that. And when somebody comes up here and is making these statements and can back them up with their paperwork, I think it's totally unfair to say that that person is a negative person. Because the negativity is in the truth? I don't think so. And I'm asking again tonight for the trustees to think before they vote on this. This is money we do not have.
I live at 1839 Institute 23rd Street in Saw Village. My family's lived in Saw Village for over 45 years. I'm here tonight to have my day in court. The last time I went to court, I had to pay $850 and I listened to a sympathetic speech and that's why I'm here tonight. I listened. I was always taught there's two sides to every story and in this case, one side is listened to. There's so much for listening to both sides. First, let me say, I was wrong. I am only a mother, a teacher, was a pastor's wife, and consider myself a good citizen. I am not a landlord, but I have become the biggest sucker in Saw Village and a very poor judge of character. When we came to Saw Village, we rented for over a year, so I know what the expectations are of a renter. We came with the intention of living here. Unfortunately, I am convinced we cannot build this town on renters. Some renters are like hitchhikers. He only wants a ride. It's your job to buy the gas, oil, maintain the car, doesn't have a car payment or a commitment. My renter didn't have a commitment either, even though he did sign a contract, which he broke almost immediately. Hence, that's why we were in court. Six people were going to live there, but shortly after that, his wife had a baby, then his daughter had a baby, and then we moved in the live-in boyfriend. The contract stated no pets. When he left on April 1st, he had two small dogs and two big dogs who were great lawnmowers. I have no grasp. He got an ADT system, which he wanted me to pay for, thank God I didn't. But last but not least, when the inspector for the village came in, he wanted to know why there were six little mattresses down in the basement. I was confused myself when there were three nice bedrooms upstairs. Six people wanted to sleep in the basement? I'm a widow. I'm not a corporation. I wasn't making repairs fast enough? Why didn't he just move on? Let me tell you why he didn't move on. He didn't pay the rent, March, February, or April. Then he gave time, of course, I gave him time, for him to get a down payment, a new truck, which he bragged about, and for me to lose my house. I've raised my children here. I've shopped here. I've attended functions as much as possible. I'm not moving. The main reason I came tonight is try to understand why. Why it's got to stop? We kneel, we're building this town on people who have an investment. Hitchhikers don't have an investment. Another house boarded up, no tax money. Another gangbanger who probably doesn't even own a whole pair of pants, let alone a belt. He played the system and he thinks he's won. Well, he hasn't. The day of a slumlord is decreasing, but the day of the renter con artist is increasing. Always in the past, I paid the rent so I wouldn't lose the house. Not this time. It's amazing how many crooks know the law. Mr. Mayor, I came here tonight because I do love this town. Everyone is not a hitchhiker and I'm not saying every renter is a crook. In closing, just let me say this. The person who owns the car is a big loser, a big time loser, not the hitchhiker. He had an agenda and at least now he's in Will County where he will not win, I'm sure. I'm praying right now that the person who rented him the house is, has more capital than I did. Because I can tell you right now, he'll never be happy. He'll move right on. Hitchhikers do that. If you're going, even thinking about renting the house to someone in Saw Village, don't. You can't win in Cook County.
Heidi Parker, Saw Village. My comment concerns the sewer rate increase on tonight's agenda. Based on my water bill, the average sewer charge per household is $40 every two months. With the village having 3,000 households, but only counting 2,000, the village is collecting $480,000 per year for sewers alone. Based on account payables, the village has spent roughly $120,000 since you've been in office, which is 10 months. Geniously doubling this figure to give me an annual rate of $240,000 is still only half of what the village is collecting for only 2,000 households, not 3,000. Due to a major portion of the IDPA loan being forgiven thanks to Mary Hanks efforts, here reduced the water rate from 750 to 650 per thousand gallons. Since this money was long, it no longer needed to pay the loan. You however, upon taking notice, immediately commenced a reduction. Monies collected for water and sewer are not meant to cover all the costs. However, these monies are continually being used for unrelated village expenses. It's unfair and unjustified to put the burden of higher rates on residents. I hope the trustees will take these facts into consideration tonight when they cast
Bernadette Hackett. Okay, um, my first question regards, I guess, well, it's number 11 on the, um, on the agenda. 11A. Um, I wanted to know what disbursements are being approved for 31018? If you could give me just a brief idea of what that's about. For 11B, what does amendment to section 78-186 and 78-187 contain regarding sewer charges? And what were the, what was the previous amount? And I think the lady just covered that kinda. But what are the new amounts that you're proposing? I'd like to know before you all vote on it. What are, uh, oh, we'll skip that. Uh, for D, what sales agreement amounts are being considered? What exactly, what, where exactly is the property located? That's one of the things I wanted to know. E, how does, um, I mean, I'm sorry. Uh, how was the final payment for, I believe this is Theodore's, pa, uh, uh, tangga da la mu. Anyway, it was a 67, looked like it's a $67,000 payment, but I was wondering, how was it appropriated and was the water fund utilized in some way? The final thing is, um, I was wondering about the human resource consultant, meaning Ms. Strouder. How exactly is this person being utilized and why is it like, is this something we've always had? Or is this just something new? And if so, what is the purpose? Just simply, what is the purpose?
That it?
Yes.
Okay, first thing, um, item A, 11A, that is a typo. Supposed to be 41018. The second item, the sewage rates, um, it's a schedule here that we've had. I don't know if it was passed out. We discussed it last week. Um, it's gonna be an increase each and every year, um, for the sewer rate because of unfunded mandates that are set by the state giving to us to take care of certain things in the infrastructure, one of those being sewer. And there was a presentation given by our, um, engineer last week for about an hour speaking on it and we have to get this money some kinda way to take care of some of these unfunded mandates that have been bestowed upon the village. Um, as far as item D, that's a property that will be talked about. That's the, is a, um, cleaners and a laundromat on Saw Trail is next to a church in that plaza. Is it the storefront church there? Then right next to that is a cleaners and a laundromat that they put a bid in. They were the highest, well, they were the most qualified there and we're awarding that contract to that person. The other item E is Mr. Panos. Uh, that $67,000 comes out of TIF money, so it's not coming out of water sewer fund and that was something that we had talked about, oh, I would say a few months back, back last year, um, of this person fixing that area up, which is right there on Saw Trail, all the way, if you can see the new, um, the new gravel, the landscape, the different, um, stuff on the building. He was supposed to take care of all that and he did and we're awarding the money. Now, when we're giving them the money, after everything has been checked out, after everything that's been, and that was discussed last week too, after everything was approved and the work was done, uh, to our expectations. Thank you. There's, that's, that's it.
No, I asked you about Dr. Strouder.
Oh, Dr. Strouder, what, what I, oh, I'm sorry. Um, Dr. Strouder's been here for, I think, 2015 when David Hank brought her in through the Owens Group. She was used sparingly and, uh, as a matter of fact, everyone says what, why did we pay? It was being paid through Owens Group. We had a, it was a contract that was $50,500 included in that. They would give us, um, a gentleman that would do our health inspection, not health, but our health and safety classes that we had for police, fire, and, uh, public works and so many hours of HR services. Well, upon renewing this contract with the Owens Group, I took that away because I didn't think it was feasible for all, for what it was, uh, what we were paying for and what we were getting for that. But as far as HR, yes, we do. If you notice, uh, we haven't had any employee lawsuits. That's what they do. That's what HR does, make sure that we are compliant and compliant with, um, the personnel in the village to make sure that we don't do or say something wrong that would put us in harm's way, that we would make, make sure that we are basically coming up to the 21st century with a lot of things that we haven't done and put in place. So yes, we need a human resource person. I am not a human resource person. I don't know the law like that. I don't know a lot of the other things that involve in that. But as far as the money's concerned, yes, we, it, it's, it's, it's a vendor, they have to pay their own cost. And today, in this evening's, um, accounts payable, and for the last three accounts payable, we paid bills over $140,000 that was brought to us last year for just lawyers, just lawyers themselves. And I didn't hear anything about that. It was one of $59,000 that was done back in 2016 for one month. And then if you, if you look at the, um, accounts payable, the last three after that was $25,300 and $25,000. Those were for monthly charges for one law firm for whatever that they charged us for. We have the readouts, but that's what they charge. I'm trying to, and I have tried to eliminate a lot of that because I don't think we need to, to continue to pay that, but we still have to be in compliance. So the best way to do things, that's, that's one way. You asked about, and it was talked about, um, the $900 or whatever, that's the end of that, that month and that's why that, it was shown on August, April 1st. But that's only for negotiations. That's not for HR. HR will be voted on tonight. So HR was done, we were done with HR from how, bringing him out from the Owens Group as of the end of March. So now I would like to have her hired as a consultant and that would be the rate and it's already, we discussed that last week too.
Kathy Betcher, and this might be a little redundant, but, all right, you said we paid...
I can't hear you, Kathy.
You said we paid Owens Group $50,500 and that included Dr. Strouder for HR. Now that you're renegotiating, has that gone down? And if so, to what? Does it compromise the, the amount we're paying her? Second, can you explain how we can lighten this regard? The Illinois statute that says you cannot raise somebody's pay when it's in the budget, when it's been budgeted? We can't afford to raise the firemen and policemen who protect this village, but we can raise somebody else's payroll? We need to tighten up purse strings and not be spending money frivolously. We're supposed to have transparency of financial. It's not being transparent. It's been unpaid.
In regards to what you said as far as transparency, if it wasn't transparent, ma'am, you wouldn't have known about it. So it is transparent and you're asking questions about it. As far as, um, paying Dr. Strouder, um, and this is what I want to understand, as far as paying for a service that we desperately need. I already mentioned how many hours that, that she was gonna be contracted for, how many days a week, and that's for HR. Negotiations is different. We're in negotiations now and it's gonna cost us a lot of money for our negotiations because it's going back and forth at a snail's pace. That much I can tell you. So that's gonna be, I don't know if it's on purpose from FOP, I'm not sure, but every time you say one, they say another and that's negotiation and that's the way it is. So I didn't need someone getting $175 an hour to go back and forth and just wait until they're tall and then they, I didn't need that. I didn't think we need, we had that kinda money. So as far as you're saying transparent, I, I am not, I don't hold anything back. I'm here every day. Now, if I'm not here every day, please tell someone what day that may be. But I'm here every day. Now, I may not be here from nine to five because I may have to go to a meeting, but I'm here every day. So if you miss me on Monday because you couldn't make it, I'm here Tuesday. All you had to do was come in and ask me the, um, we have the finance chairman and, um, the treasurer are not, the finance chairman's here every day. The treasurer's not here every day, but if there's questions, come in, come ask, come find out. It's not a problem. It's not a matter of somebody's hiding something. I don't know where that comes from, but if that's the word you choose to use, that's okay. But I do know what I'm here and what I'm doing. I'm not one of the people, you have yet heard me say what I'm doing and how much I'm getting paid and that's not about that. I'm not here for the pay. Believe me, I'm not here for the pay. I'm here for the people of Saw Village. And that's why I thought I was elected, to make changes so we don't do the same thing we've been doing for the last 20 some years. So yes, it's going to, you have to break eggs to make an argument. Then, so you have to do some things. If you do the same thing over and over again and expect a different result, then I would be crazy. So yes, things have to change. I was voted in to make that change. Some of these things may not, you may not like them, but it's a change that we have to go forward in because we don't have the money, because we've lost over $700,000. I'll say that again. $700,000 we've lost in revenue over the past year for people that have moved out and not moved in. So where do you get that money from? So you have to make a difference. You have to, I'm not trying to raise, um, um, taxes and I don't think any of these trustees up there wanna raise taxes. So you have to do something to get that money to continue the services that we have. As of yet, I have not let anyone go, um, because of that reason. I tried to make it work the best way I could and I tried to do that. So that's the only thing I'm, I'm saying. And as far as trying to, um, the, the water bills, I mean, yes, it was voted back in because we lost 100 and, I don't know where they got their numbers from, that 95% of the people that were given a water bill were paying their water bills. I don't know where that came from. And that was, that was the reason I heard, the reason why they voted a dollar back because 95% of the people, they must've just did it for that one week because I tell you right now, and I got records to show that we get maybe 65 to 70% of the people that get water bills paid. We have a list, a cutoff list, a shut off list each and every month in the hundreds, every month. Taxes, uh, we, we're trying to hold those, that, that's being raised, if that's being done, that's being done by the county. But I'm not trying to raise taxes or raise anything. Yes, the rates that we raised for the sewer had to be taken care of, had to be done. Well, I don't know where else we can get the water, the money from to make those changes that we are mandated to make. I'm not, I don't run from, I don't run from that. That being said, um, we'll go right into mayor's report. Um, there's a couple of things that I wanted to bring up. First of all, cleanup day will be April 28th, um, here at the village hall. This is when the village-wide cleanup, it starts at 8:00 AM. We'll have refreshments in, at that morning and then we'll have lunch at about 1 o'clock back here at the senior center. And as I stated before, we hope to have gloves and bags, which we will have, but I hope that you can bring your neighbors, your friends to come out and help us clean up the whole Saw Village. We have different areas that we're gonna be starting at and hopefully we can get those done and move to the other areas. So hoping that I can get a big turnout to help with that part of it, to help clean up the village of Saw Village. Um, I just wanted to remind the trustees and anyone else that may be a commissioner, to fill out the economic interest statements that are due by May 1st. After that date, you will be disqualified. And you can fill it out online. If you don't know how, see me after the meeting, I can show you what needs to be done because there's some of you here that have not done it. So you do have to go online and, um, get your password and a user ID and you can complete it online in less than 10 minutes. That's all that I have. Village clerk, Ms. Margaret Hamilton.
Today, as we might just generate, um, just really talk loud. Uh, we have one thing that I would like to speak on and let this do the government day is on April the 24th, which is our next meeting. The young people are being readied for the one that's taking place at the school district. They will be there on that Monday and then the following Tuesday, they will be here. So what I would ask of each of you is to provide a short, brief written report to me next Wednesday. I know normally you give them to me Thursday, Fridays, Sunday, or Monday, but this time I am going to ask that you have them for Wednesday so that I can meet with the young people. And if you would like to go over to Rick over to meet with them, you're more than welcome to join me. I suspect that I will do that on Friday. But they, we will sit behind them, they will sit at our seats and some of them will sit down front and they will give our reports for the most part. Okay? And after that, we're looking at possibly the first weekend, the first Friday of May to just bring them all back here, give them a tour and then provide lunch for them. And for that, you are definitely welcome to do so as well. April the 18th, next Wednesday. Any other questions? Thank you. That concludes my report.
Okay, village engineer, Mr. Jim Zarnik.
Thank you, mayor. An agenda item for tonight's meeting is the award of the Arrowhead Park Improvements Project. Robinson Engineering is recommending that the village award this project to D&amp;J Landscape Incorporated. Project involves construction of a baseball field, playground, access and walking paths, grading, and drainage improvements. Project is 90% funded by an open space lands acquisition and development grant program provided by the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. Project will be constructed this spring and summer and will be completed by the end of August. That completes my report. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Friday progress, Chief Al. Fire Department Chief Al Staubrey.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. This is the first in a long time. Over the period from March twenty-second through April the fourth, the fire department responded to twelve calls. I think the guys got rusty, fell asleep or something. It's kudos to them. We had five fire alarms, four vehicle accidents, and three ambulance PD assists. And that is my report.
Thank you. Police Department Chief Robert Kowalski.
I can't be that short. Uh, so for the past two weeks, uh, police department responded to four hundred and fifty calls with seven arrests. And to clarify, uh, on March thirty-first, Cook County Sheriff's Officers responded to a call in Ford Heights of a suspicious circumstance on the fourteen-hundred block of Greenwood Avenue. Responding sheriff's officers found three men in a home with an underage female. The males were taken into custody. The female explained she was grabbed by the three unknown offenders on the street in Saw Village, but this was never reported to our department. The juvenile victim stated that she did not know the offenders and she was sexually assaulted by them. The three offenders are well-known to our police department but no longer live in Saw Village. They're currently being held on two hundred and fifty thousand dollar bond, and they are all nineteen years of age. On April second, while on patrol, officers observed an individual known to have a suspended driver's license in a vehicle around the area of the Marathon Gas Station. Officer ran the subject through our law enforcement data system and confirmed the subject did not have a valid driver's license. Officer activated his emergency lights, and the driver began to flee from the area northbound on three ninety-four. Officer began to pursue vehicle, when the vehicle began to smoke and become disabled. Officer and backup officers were able to apprehend the driver and three other passengers in the vehicle. Once outside the car, the officer saw drugs in the vehicle. Officer also discovered drug paraphernalia and a loaded automatic handgun. All items were recovered and sent to the Illinois State Police Crime Lab. Felony charges were approved on the driver for fleeing and eluding, possession of controlled substance, possession of drug paraphernalia, and unlawful use of a weapon. And on April fourth, officers received a call of suspicious circumstances at a vacant house at twenty-one fifty-two nineteenth place. Upon arrival, four juvenile offenders fled from the house. Officers pursued the offenders on foot, catching all four. Juveniles were identified and turned over to their respective parents. Petitions will be filed with juvenile court on the offenders for burglary, but I'm not counting on the state's attorney's office to do anything with that. The Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police, AAA, and the Illinois High School and College Driver Education Association are coordinating the Second Annual Statewide Distraughted Driving Awareness Week, April twenty-third through the twenty-seventh. Saw Village Police Department will again participate in this campaign. Contrary to what some drivers may think, hands-free handheld and in-vehicle technologies are not distraction-free. Even if a driver's eyes are on the road and their hands are on the wheel, the latest AAA Foundation for Traffic Safety Research found that drivers who text when behind the wheel more than double their odds of being involved in a crash. Drivers who use in-vehicle technologies like voice-based and touchscreen features can be distracted for more than forty seconds when completing tasks like programming navigation or sending a text message and removing eyes from the road for just two seconds doubles the risk for a crash. Violating Illinois's distracted driving laws can be costly. Know before you go in Illinois, laws prohibit all drivers from texting and driving, they prohibit all drivers from using a handheld phone while driving, and laws prohibited all teens from using a cellphone while driving. So officers will be watching during that time period, April twenty-third to twenty-seven. Lastly, the Saw Village Police Department is now registered as a prescription drug drop-off site. The quarterly drug drop-off will be held again on April twenty-eighth, the same day as the village cleanup, between eight and three PM in the lobby of the Saw Village Police Department. We're asking anyone who would like to dispose of their unwanted drugs, please feel free to do so before you go out and clean up Saw Village. That'll be the end of my report.
Thank you, chief. Uh, community development director, Sherri Juzinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Night court totals for April fourth, we had a hundred and twenty-eight on the court docket, thirteen were found liable, nine were found not guilty, and a hundred and six were found guilty for failure to appear and fines were defaulted at seven hundred and fifty dollars. I have filed an additional twelve claims today, equalling a total of ten thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-five cents, and this concludes my report.
Thank you. Economic Development Director, Mr. Joseph Wizardwatt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, the village board has before it the request for proposals for grass mowing for the vacant homes as scheduled in the Illinois Housing Development Authority Grant the village was awarded. We are still in the process of our preliminary due diligence list, checklist, excuse me, on each property identified to be mowed and/or demolished under the grant. As the mayor reported two weeks ago, the village is scheduled to maintain a hundred and twelve vacant homes mowing, removal of trees and overgrown brush in thirty-five homes, and board up and securing twenty-five vacant homes and demolishing eight. We will be preparing another RFP for remediation of bushes and trees on vacant properties as we identify, as we have identified as most critical. We'll also be putting together RFQ for board-up service securing the properties as we've identified as needing to be of attention. Additionally, we had a meeting with the Illinois Housing Development Authority and their legal team this afternoon to discuss the process by which the village will be getting reimbursed for the work performed under the grant. A resolution will be before the village board in May to accept the grant for the vacant abandoned home maintenance. We anticipate closing the grant out sometime in June before June thirteenth. Our first funding request would be submitted on or before September thirteenth. It is worth noting that only fifteen communities in all of Cook County received funding, Saw Village being one of the fifteen. The village has two surface transportation programs, STP, projects that are queued up for one of which is for this year. As you may be aware, Cornell and Torrance Avenue resurfacing project is one of those. The total project cost is estimated at seven hundred two thousand, of which the village is using an invested Cook grant and motor fuel tax dollars to complete the match for the federal aid dollars. The second is for the intersection improvements and traffic signal at Saw Trail and Mark Collins Drive. This project is authorized for five hundred and fifty thousand in federal aid. The process by which funding for these future projects is going to be changing. Currently, our COG is South Suburban Regional Council, which will no longer be making determinations of allocations. This will be moved to CMAP, and the transportation projects will need to be more of a regional approach and become even more competitive. Mayor Burgess and I met with Cook County Transportation and Highway Department Superintendent John Yonan in Chicago last week to discuss future improvements in the queue for Saw Trail west of three ninety-four. Engineering work has already begun at the county level, and the village will be involved in this process. Mr. Yonan is committed to assisting the village and our commitment to economic development, including expediting matters which are time-critical. Cook County's two thousand eighteen invested Cook deadline passed recently, which yielded seventy applications seeking forty million dollars in grants for the eight point five million that was set aside for the transportation improvements. Saw Village has an interview with Cook County scheduled for April sixteenth. With respect to this grant, Jim Zarnik will be joining me in that. The Cook County Board of Commissioners is expected to approve the awards in July of this year. Saw Village applied for four hundred and fifty thousand in this round for expanding rail spur and roadways within the logistics center to expand economic development opportunities. The village board has before it tonight for approval, the final payment to Theodorus Penagiotopoulos for the Tiff number four improvements. I have provided each of the members of the board copies of the documentation necessary to validate payment, was made by Mr. Panos under the terms of the redevelopment agreement. Finally, the board also has before it a motion to enter into a sales agreement with Mr. Nabil Abazir. This authorizes the mayor to enter into the sales agreement for the old laundromat at seventeen seventeen Saw Trail, which the village acquired through a scavenger sale in twenty fifteen and finally took ownership in twenty seventeen. This was put out for proposals. We did receive two proposals, and staff and I had reviewed both, and our recommendation is to move forward with Mr. Abazir's proposal for the purchase for forty thousand dollars and fifty-five thousand dollars in improvements. We will also have a resolution before the village board in two weeks to support approval of the Class Eight for both parcels of land that are involved. Mr. Abazir will have to file his application with Cook County for the Class Eight after we close on the property. I have one correction on the RFP that you have before you. The dates are correct, however, the term of months is incorrect. So on number six of the term of contract, the term of contract shall run for five months. It is typed in there as seven, however, the dates may through October are correct. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Beautification Committee Chairman.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, before the department heads, um, lead, can I, I'd like to ask Jim Sernick a question? Well, not a question, but a statement to clear up because I talked to him about the infrastructure report that was on the accounts payable, and he's going to give me that information free of charge. So I just want to make that sure that I'm, so I won't have to ask for it in a four-year request. And also, I talked to him about getting some information for the infrastructure, and he advised me to go and talk to the different mayors and engineers in different neighborhooding, neighborhooding townships, and it takes anywhere from three to nine months. I know you're eager to get that recommendation, but I can't do without some updated data. He said everything that they have in their file needs to be updated. Am I right, or I need some clarity on that? I just want to put it in the minutes that we talk about the different things that I need in order to do the infrastructure, recommendation of infrastructure.
Yeah, um, my understanding is to respond to FOIA, um, I need to get a list of recommendations for infrastructure improvements. Very quick to get that, and, um, and an answer on what that FOIA was and the accounts payable.
Yes, mm-hmm. Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Yes.
Okay, beautification.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, I have something for Mr. Zarnik as well before we let them go. On the agenda for tonight, we also have a motion to accept a proposal and recommendation from D&amp;J Landscape relative to the Oz Lot Grants. It was my understanding last week that while the bid came in with a base bid and an alternate bid, we can't afford either one, and we talked about a reduced amount, yet I don't see anywhere in the agenda for tonight to say that we're accepting it for a lower amount. So I would like to make sure that we have it on record, the amount that we are talking about versus what's in the document.
Yes, so, um, we have to award based on the bid that was offered, so that's how the motion has to be worded. However, we will not allow the actual outlay from the village to exceed the grant funding, which is, I want to say, two hundred and six thousand dollars, two hundred and nine thousand, somewhere in that range.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Beautification Committee Chairman, Trustee Linda Todd.
No report at this time.
Senior Advisory Council, Chairman, Mr. Emmett Farmer. Could you give him a mic, please? Our next meeting for the Senior Advisory Council is Thursday, April twelfth, at five PM, and all are welcome. Also, our April calendar is posted. Just want to give you all a copy, at least the trustees, the mayor.
Chief, one's another one?
I got one, thanks. Our energy service programs, CETA, is, well, April tenth, which was today, we have one, next one's the twenty-third of April, then we have two in May, May fourteenth to twenty-first, from nine AM to twelve PM. It's Friday, April thirteenth only, which will feature help with your water bill and other utilities, plus we will be giving out free water bottles, free gallon bottles of water on that day. And also insurance wireless with free phones will be there all of these dates. It has put in an application to use the senior center once a week to offer free phones. Also, information of Tuesdays, scheduled for the second Tuesday each month, was today, and our monthly health fair will be April twenty-sixth, and will feature guests, our featured guests is Oak Street Health, United Healthcare, and Walgreens. And please don't forget our game night every first and third Friday from five PM to nine PM, and, and that's all I have, thank you.
Any question? Thank you. Reports from trustees, standing committees, public service committee, trustee Bernice Brewer.
As mentioned a few minutes ago, Mr. Mayor, Robinson Engineering is going to provide me with some information about infrastructure, and also, they also have information in their files about water rates, what we need to do, and, uh, so once I get that information, he said it shouldn't take that long, that we're going to start. It takes anywhere from three to six months in order to get a recommendation. Once I put all that information together, we're going to sit down and talk, and then we're going to also talk with Kevin about what we could do about the infrastructure improvement. This does not include water rates, infrastructure improvement. So that's an ongoing event, so as soon as he gets all the information together, we will start working. That's the end of that report.
Budget and Finance Committee Trustee Roger Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things. One, next Wednesday, seven o'clock, in the return to here, Budget Finance Committee meeting. And also, hopefully within the next month or so, we'll be able to get the new budget for the fiscal year to the boards for review, as it's getting pretty close to the end of the fiscal year, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Parks and Rec, right now, parks, the gym is open on Mondays and Fridays from three to around six thirty, seven o'clock. If anyone is interested, I'm looking for volunteers to help out on some days. If you need to come up to the village hall, apply, we will talk. And right now, I'm looking for volunteers to help in that aspect. The new budget coming, I'm looking probably for getting something or getting a person full-time there or at least part-time to start out to actually run and bring programs. So that's something that's going to be on the new horizon for that. We're trying to do right now, getting some needed repairs in the gym and over on the community center side. So that's being done right now by Public Works, and we're trying to upgrade and update a lot of different things that hasn't been done in there for years and years, so. But I'm still looking for volunteers to help out with the, with the gym, any other day during the week. Right now, as I stated, I have somebody Monday and Friday, just Monday and Friday, so if we can get some people to help us out with that, greatly appreciated. Housing and Governmental Relations, trustee, say it. No report. Okay, Orders Review Committee, trustee Linda Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a meeting scheduled for last week, and due to the fact that I did not have a call, we canceled it, and it's now scheduled for this Thursday at six thirty, which is, that's April twelfth. And what we're going to do is we're getting closer to the false alarm ordinance, so I'll probably present it before the board, probably within a month. We also have something else that we're reviewing is the water rehab rates. We also have something else that we're reviewing is the water rehab rates. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee, Trustee Bev Zupan.
Nothing on the Public Safety Committee since we didn't meet last week, but I would like to just say a couple of things real quickly about the Easter egg hunt that we had the day before Easter. Wanted to say this last Tuesday, but didn't get a chance since the meeting ended a little bit earlier than planned. I wanted to just say, I thought we had a really nice turnout that day, even though the weather didn't really cooperate with, you know, the cold, windy, dreary morning that we had that day. But I more, you know, wanted to thank those who did come out for doing so, the volunteers that we had to help us with that. And also, wanted to mention, we had some corporate sponsors that we wanted to show our appreciation to as well. The Nancy McConaughey Library, Culvers of Creed, and Texas Roadhouse of Dyer. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. Our new business, I entertain a motion to approve accounts payable for the date of 4/10/2018.
So moved.
Question.
Second.
She's second.
Okay. It was moved by trustee Grant, second by trustee Todd. Any questions?
Question. Mr. Mayor, on page one of the accounts payable, we got the Owens Group on there where we paid them $66,000. I guess this is part of the premium, but it says a loan down payment. Now, I talked to Mohan about this, and Mohan said, well, the way I understand it is that the first insurance funding is paying the Owens Group, but we got to pay them $8,000 in order to get the $66,000. So, we don't have all the money? That's what he told me. So, I'm sort of confused about that. And he said this has been an ongoing thing for the last two or three years.
Okay. Is that the question?
Well, I mean, I haven't finished. I'm just with that particular one. So, I mean, is that an ongoing thing? We got to pay somebody else to pay our insurance? Is that?
The insurance is 300 some thousand. No, we don't have that type of money. So, in order to keep our rate where we have it, we have to go through a financial institution to pay it basically a loan. And that's what they charge for that loan, for them to pay that money. We pay them a down payment so much each month.
Okay. So, the next installment that we have to, for insurance, we have to pay them another $8,000? Every time we do this, it's?
I'm not sure what the installments are, but I'm sure Mohan can tell you what the installments are each month.
Okay. Well, then, also on page one, we have, we paid the Owens Group $5,568,000, $568 for HR consulting for the month ending March 30th. And then, if you go down on that same page, we had paid Dr. Stroud $3,360 for professional services. So, again, even if she's doing police negotiations, on page three, we paid the law firm $1,986. And you saying this is something we need because we really can't afford all this? It's sort of expensive for HR services. You only have 115 people, and she's been here since 2015. It seems like to me, they should have it, the employees should have it by now, what's expected to them. But to pay her $3,360 for professional service, it doesn't make any sense to me. You know, it's just, she's, it's getting to where it's a luxury we cannot afford to have a third party in here. And you said, well, okay, you know, if you want the attorneys here, well, we got to pay attorneys a set fee, let them do their job. And, you know, what do we need to pay Dr. Stroud an extra $3,360 for three days, four days of work? It doesn't make any sense. But that's, that's my comment on that. Also, on page three, it says police negotiations to the attorney, $1,986, what I was already talking about, where we just paid the Dr. Stroud $3,000 for the same thing. Now, also, on here, we go back to what was confusing about this. On page two, Robinson Engineering was paid $2,900 for a FOIA request. I didn't do it before you guys get all upset. For water main, water main information on page two. Then, on page six, they asked us for $3,000 for a water main replacement. So, I asked him for a copy of whatever he was doing there. So, I don't know what's the difference in, in that issue. And I asked, well, Mohan was not here yesterday, and I couldn't get the information because he said the database wasn't available. But it seems like to me that those are one of the two things. And down at the bottom of page six, Robinson Engineering is reviewing a plan for the South S.E. gas station. Now, it's understanding, when we brought their property up there, we didn't know what was going on in there. So, you saying this, this gas wash is going to be up there on 394? So, is, that's the question. This gas, we going to have a gas station there on 394? They, I mean, they're building plans for something. Where's this gas station going?
Is that all your questions? Because I'm trying to answer whatever I can, so I'm just answering. You got any more questions?
I mean...
Because we're not going to debate back and forth.
I'm not debating. I'm asking you a question.
I'm asking you, is that all your questions?
No, that's not all my questions, Mr. Mayor. This is a public forum. I have public questions.
I'm not going to debate back and forth, trustee.
I'm debating with you. I just asked you a question.
Are there any more questions?
Until, but right now, maybe when you have to answer, I just need you to explain some stuff.
Trustee, if you have any more questions, please ask, Margaret. I'm not going to go back and forth. I'm sure we're not going to, I'm not going to do that. I will try to answer the questions that you ask.
Okay. Well, okay, the biggest thing everybody wants to know is why we keep paying Dr. Stroud all this money? $3,360 for professional work, and then have to go back and pay the lawyers almost $2,000? Why is she, you know, that does not save the money. We don't have any money. You have made it perfectly clear to us that we don't have any money, yet we paying all these large amounts to Dr. Stroud out of camp she's qualified now. South Village is pro. We can't afford her. Anything she does has to go to the attorney anyway. So, why don't you let, we pay an attorney, let them do their jobs? I'm finished with that.
Okay. First of all, back in whatever, I think that was page one, the Owens Group, the down payment, I explained that to you. The Owens Group HR, we have, as I stated two weeks ago, or maybe more than that, that that was the last date that we would use them for Owens Group, and we had to pay that out. That's what that is. That was also with the amount that was added on for administration fee that I did not want. I took it out of there. The professional services, we voted on that she would be the negotiator. Now, if you wanted to have the lawyers do it for twice as much, you know, that wasn't voted on. It was voted down that it would be done for 85. But you did not tell, you did not even stop at this other one where it says Olson and Stirk for $20,739 back in March, or April, I'm sorry, 2017.
Nobody asked.
I'm surprised that that was never asked about for that one month. As far as Robinson Engineering doing for the, what is that, at the last page at the bottom, for the gas and watch, that's a preliminary study, and it was paid out TIF fund because it's going to be in the TIF. So, that, excuse me?
That's not what I asked.
You asked me what it was, the South Village gas plan review. You didn't ask that.
I asked you, are we getting another gas station?
I didn't, okay. It's a review. So, they were, I mean, sorry, Robinson Engineering was asked to look into that to see if it's feasible if they went that way. That's what that was for, and that was paid through TIF. As far as the, 394 water main replacement, they were asked to look at that because we may have to replace the water main at 394 that goes across 394. So, they have to look into that, and that's what they charged to do that. In regards to the, you said we can't afford Dr. Stroud, we can't afford not to have someone to pay a less amount when we come to negotiations. I explained that over and over again, so I guess you like hearing that, but we don't have the money to pay twice as much as someone else to do the same thing. When we get closer and it gets to that point, yes, we will let our lawyers look at it, but to go back and forth, because I keep saying it over and over again, to go back and forth and what they're doing, negotiations, anything about negotiations, if you know anything about it, you're going to go back and forth. To pay someone to keep doing that, I didn't see it feasible for the village. So, that's why we have that. Any other questions on the accounts payable? Have a motion on the floor?
I have a comment. I want to address somebody's questions or comments from the audience earlier as it relates to Dr. Stroud's services. These are not three individual days. If you look at the bottom of page one, you'll see that these are invoice dates. Her hourly rate is $85 an hour. So, you'll notice that the first invoice date, March 25th, is for 14 hours' worth of work. The second invoice date is the 28th, which is 14 and a half hours' worth of work. The third invoice is for 11 hours' worth of work. I don't know the specific days covered under each invoice, but I'm sure they are more than a day apiece. The other comment I would make relative to that is that every invoice goes to the mayor for his review prior to checks being even put on accounts payable. So, the finance director doesn't just take these himself. Everything goes to the mayor, and there's a conversation between he and the mayor before they get presented for inclusion in an accounts payable. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones? Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Motion is carried. I entertain a motion to approve the ordinance for Section 7D-8-186 and 78-187 of the South Village Municipal Code for Sewer Charges.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Grant, and second by trustee Zupan. Any questions?
Question, well, comment, Mr. Mayor. After doing some research, I discovered that the sewer rates have been raised ever since 2006 for the maintenance operations of the current sewer system. But once we get the monies in, it's commingled with the water fund, and that money is used for everything else except improvement to the current water system. Now, Robinson Engineering came in, and he said he need about $582,000 to do two different things that's mandated by the state. But it seems like to me, if we've been collecting money from 2006 for improvements to the sewer system, we should have the money there. The money's not there. So, this, whoever wrote this ordinance up, I applaud them for putting the phrase in there so we could build a surplus to fund ongoing repairs associated with this utility. Because if we don't separate the sewer fund from the water fund, we don't run into the same situations that we were in before. And my question is, and I'm asking Jim about it, is that since 2006, all this money that's been taken in for the improvement of system, do we have some kind of data or report that shows what actually has been done to improve the sewer system and how much money has been taken in for the sewer system? Because we're collecting money, it doesn't make any sense to raise rates every five years if we not improving or doing something to the water system. And since 2006, since we collected all this money, well, we, I don't know what improvements have been done to the sewer system. So, is it possible, or who could I talk to about getting what has been done to improve the sewer system since 2006? The rates have been raised specifically for improvement and repair, so where would I get that information?
That it?
That's my comment.
Okay. As far as finding that out, I don't know where to tell you since 2006 what went where. I can only tell you that when this, and that's what I said, when this is being done, this money will be separated for that reason, as was stated last week when we had the presentation. Anybody's collected right now, any over, you said over, if any money collected for the raise will be set aside so we can fund these items that we put for the village. So, we won't be able to do it right away because we have to save the money, but this money for the sewer rate will be saved and put aside. As we get the money in, we will start doing some of the mandated, that reason.
Comment.
Yes, sir.
So, just want to point out that, so, there will be a separate GL number just set up strictly for these funds.
Yes, for the raise.
For the raise.
Yes, sir.
If they're approved. And also, last week, I asked you about how much is the minimum water bill, I believe, the minimum rates. And so, I just kind of went back, and I just figured out that if this is approved tonight, that the average water bill probably, if you use the minimum, rides about $5 and about 70 cents or so. So, the typical water bill average now for a minimum is about 108, and it rises to about 114.
That's every two months.
Every two months.
Correct. Any other questions?
So, you said we have no idea where we get that information? Or even if anything's been done on it?
I mean, I don't know what happened in 2006 and how much they were spent, 2007, '08, '09, how much money was spent on sewer, on the sewer itself. No, I don't have that. I don't know if Mohan has it. I'm not sure. But I know, I don't know where to go to find that out. I can't tell you where to go, but I don't know where to go. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Jones? Tate?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Zupan?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I entertain a motion to accept the proposal and recommendation of the D&amp;J Landscape Company for Arrowhead Park improvements for the open space land acquisition and development, the Oz Land Grant.
So moved. Second.
Okay. It was moved by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Todd. Any questions?
Just comment to trustee Zupan's point. Is there anything in writing we can get that say that we want to go above that $206,000 mark? I know that we have to award the grant in that amount that it was bid for, but is there anything that we can get in writing that says that we won't go above that amount?
That we won't go up past that?
Correct.
Well, the money's going to tell us right away that that's all we have. So, we're not, we're only, we're only going to vote out what we have. And that's all we're going to get reimbursed for. That's the reimbursement. So, that's all we'll get reimbursed for, was that would be that amount. So, that'll stop itself, but I will get something in writing and pass it out to the trustees that you can actually see it coming from the county. That's where it would be coming from. Madam Clerk?
Trustee Tate? Todd?
Yes.
Zupan?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Adam D., approval and authorization for the mayor to enter into sales agreement with Mr. Abazir for the redevelopment of the village-owned property, pin number 32 dot 25 dot 302 dot 026 and 027.
So moved. Second.
Moved by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Todd. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Zupan?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Jones? Tate?
Motion is carried. I entertain a motion for the final approval of the final payment of $67,010.59 to Mr. For the development of the TIF 4 property.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Grant, second by trustee Todd. Any questions?
Comment?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, when we approved this $67,000 for Mr. Panos, it was a resident that came in that particular night, and she complained, I know this is a little off... I know this is a little off script, but if you allow me to, uh, say this, um, the, uh, resident, uh, stated to us that she had snakes under her sidewalk. Now, to me, we gonna pay a vendor sixty-seven thousand dollars to get his parking lot payment stuff. And I went by the resident's house yesterday, she still has snakes on her sidewalk. So to me, things are being done that's not addressing the residence issue, but, you know, but we could pay out sixty-seven thousand dollars to a vendor. We need to sort of think about our priorities here. And I thought, I thought our priorities should be residence. So with that, I just wanted to throw that out there that we might want to think about when residents come up here and ask for a few little things, we might want to give it to them. End of my comment.
Um, trustee, first of all, this is not a vendor, he's a business owner.
Business owner, I'm sorry.
And, um, he is in a TIF district and utilizing TIF funds. That's one of the reasons why I love, we have a TIF district so they can utilize and for the betterment of their particular facade. That's his facade, we would help him along. As far as what you were talking about, something, I don't know if the village is in the snake business, but if, you know, if you want to rec, if, I don't know who would go by and pick, I don't have anybody in the village that go by and pick up snakes. I'm sorry, I don't know, um, if we need to hire someone for that reason, I'm not sure because that's not the first time I heard about snakes being in the village, but...
See?
Not the first time I've heard of snakes being in the village, but, uh, we don't even have animal, um, um, control officer. So the spend of sixty-seven thousand, it is for the, is for the business that's inside a TIF and that's what that's for. We cannot use that money anywhere but the TIF. So if a person doesn't live in the TIF, which I can tell you right now they don't, um, I don't know what to, um, to tell you as far as that's concerned. I, like I said, I got a phone call for someone that had a snake and I told him to call Anti-Cruiser Society, which is in Chicago Heights. That's the only thing I can tell him. I don't have anybody here in the village that's, would go by and take a snake out. So Anti-Cruiser Society will come out.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I want to, um, make my second comment on that. I wasn't talking about taking the snakes out or anything. I was saying that the resident came and she said her sidewalk was crumbling and it had snakes under. The, the, uh, I guess the, um, the, uh, issue about the, what she was talking about is that her sidewalk was crumbling and she's a resident. And I'm saying that we could spend sixty-seven thousand dollars on, I don't care if it's from a TIF or whatever, but we should be able to get her sidewalk fixed, just like we fixing this driveway. So I'm, I'm not talking about getting snakes or anything like that, but residents should come get a look something for all the money we spending up here.
You, you, you're, you're, again, trustee, you're mixing two different things.
There we go, I'm not mixing anything, I'm talking about the lady's sidewalk.
Anything, anything, any, uh, any other comment?
I think they got it.
Any other comments? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Grant.
Yes.
Jones. Tate. Todd.
Yes.
Motion approved. I entertain a motion to approve for request for a proposal for the grass mowing project utilized I H D A grant. I'll make, I'll approve for, I'm sorry, I will entertain a motion.
So moved with the change mentioned previously. Second.
Okay, it was moved by trustee Zupan and second by... Okay, the change is that it wouldn't, um, the change is what you were asking about the, um, the amount of money, correct?
No, term.
The term, yeah.
The document says seven months, it's really...
Five months, yeah. So you shouldn't, you should, yeah, she's amending that she would vote, she'd make a motion that it would be for five months instead of seven. It was moved by trustee Zupan and second by trustee, uh, Todd?
Yes.
Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Brewer.
Yes.
Grant.
Yes.
Jones. Tate. Todd.
Yes.
Zupan.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Approval and authorization for the mayor to enter into agreement with the Human Resources Consultative between the village and Dr. Stroud. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
It was moved by trustee Grant, second by trustee Zupan. Any questions?
I have a comment. I actually do have a question, but I have a comment as well. I noticed we got a, uh, a revised copy of the statement of work. And I noticed that taken out of it, the last meeting we, uh, trustee Zupan talked about, um, because it said maximum budget approved is six thousand. And I think at that time she wanted monthly put in. But I see that's completely taken out of this statement of work. And I noticed that the dates have been changed on it as well. And here's my comment. I do not believe that we need an H R person at this time because it's so costly. Now, one of the things is, after reviewing several invoices, and there was a stack of invoices, it's very disturbing that the, that she charges us to talk to, uh, the mayor's wife, that she plans parties, things like that. That is not what we would need her for. One of the things, though, is I did look at something that she had taken care of and it had to do with the employee handbook. The old administration, it has committees on there that are no longer. So I don't know if it was a copy and paste, I don't know if she knows who the new administration is, but it's disturbing. But my comment is, we cannot afford it and I want you to know that.
Any other question?
Comment. Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, according to the, uh, employee's handbook, that on page nine, there's a conflict of interest with having Dr. Stroud here. Again, I want to say we can't afford her. And also in addition to that, there's no ordinance that even established the H R for South Village. So, uh, I think that's against the governor's state statute. Um, there is no ordinance on the books that I'm aware of. And I asked trustee Todd to look for it, but I, you know, she hasn't been able to find one. And, and of course, I'm gonna go over it again. Cut out the middleman, we don't need Dr. Stroud. You only have a hundred and fifteen full, the part-time employees. Most of them have been here twenty-five, thirty years and stuff. All you can do is go and talk to them, they can do whatever you want them to do. But to have Dr. Stroud here costing us more money, we talking about negotiation, we're paying the attorney for everything she does. Why, why, just, you just need to cut out the middleman, she's not necessary. That's what we pay the attorneys for. If we paying twice as much, at least they're getting the job done. All this back and forth with Dr. Stroud, it doesn't make any sense. And, and every time I go back there, the only thing I ever see is do a sign at an office giggle. I mean, I'm just being...
We're not, we're not, please, um, trustee, we're not gonna do personalities.
I'm not doing personalities, I'm telling you facts.
You're being personal.
Wait a minute, I'm telling you...
You're being personal.
I'm, I'm not being personal, I'm telling you facts, okay?
No, but you're being personal.
How come you only cut off my comments and nobody else talks?
You're being personal.
I'm not being personal and you can't control the way I talk, this is a public meeting. I'm talking to the public, I have a U.S. constitutional right to talk. Dr. Stroud does not need to be here. She's costing us too much money. We pay the attorneys, let the attorneys do their job. That, that means every time I need something, I need to write up and send it to the attorney. At least they giving me a stipend, you paying, you overpaying her. For what? For getting... That's the end of my comment.
Comment, Mr. Mayor? I disagree with the other trustees, I believe we do need an H R person. If you work in a corporation with any number of employees, you have an H R person to make sure that things are running as they should and employees are not running willy-nilly.
Excuse me, can we have our meeting up here, please? I just asked that we, that we will respect you. After it's over, there was, uh, public comment at the beginning of the meeting. You have something to say, have a problem. But when we have a meeting, can we at least get some respect that you're not trying to overtalk us and we're trying to have our meeting here? Thank you very much.
I'll continue to say that while I looked at some of the invoices and wasn't real thrilled with the content of the invoices, she does have a role to play here and her funding is included in our budget. So it's not like we're out here spending money that is unbudgeted funds and we do not run to the lawyers with H R issues. We involve the attorneys with negotiations when it comes to contract negotiations, which is a separate conversation. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
We're not gonna revisit, ma'am, our trustee, trustee, we're not...
I have to say, second point on this particular issue, and I want to make this comment on your, uh, on your, um, uh, agreement that you issued. At the bottom, you have the mayor has the approval of the, um, uh, paint the phrase, but you don't say the mayor and the board, you just say the mayor. And I asked to put, it's supposed to be mayor and the vice and consent of the board. That should be included. Am I not mistaken? See at the bottom?
Any other question?
Mayor Derek Burgess or Dr. Stroud. It should be Mayor Derek Burgess and with the consent and vice and consent of the board.
Any other question?
Why isn't that in there?
Because I'm taking care of day-to-day operations, ma'am. This is a day-to-day operation. I'm not gonna ask the board, can I move forward with that? If we need to vote money out legislation, yes. Yes, it has to go before the board and it will come before the board. If there's any money voted out, any legislation changed. But day-to-day operations, then it falls under the mayor. It always has. This ain't the first time this has been like this, it always has been that way.
So we all know?
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Grant.
Yes.
Jones. Tate. Todd.
No.
Zupan.
Yes.
Brewer.
No.
Okay, motion is carried. I don't know where we can get more comments, but I'll take this chance. Your comments from the man for trustee, we're talking with trustee, um, Todd.
No comment.
Trustee Brewer.
Of course, I have another comment. Uh, Mr. Mayor, we are not home rule. Anything you do here at the board, it should be with the mayor and the vice and consent of the board. I don't know, uh, where you could get this information from, but, uh, I'm quite sure we do it, it was a state statute, but I thought it's supposed to be the mayor and the consent of the board. We can't afford Dr. Stroud, as simple as that. End of my comment.
Trustee, um, Tate. Trustee Zupan.
I just wanted to let everybody know that I did take trustee Brewer's information that she shared with us last week about changing salaries. Uh, and there's nothing here that indicates we have done anything incorrectly. So if you'd like to talk online, we can, we can do so. Um, this was in regards to state statute and where I see what you've shown to us does not indicate that we've done anything wrong. Happy to talk with anybody after the meeting about it as well.
Yeah.
Trustee Grant?
Uh, no comment.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Moved by trustee Brewer, second by trustee, um, Todd. All in favor?
All in.
Poses? Thank you.